I would like to call the meeting to order. This is the final meeting in these city council chambers. Today is Wednesday, November 4th, and you are at the final meeting of the regular meeting of the Oregon City Commission. Good evening.
The final meeting?
The final meeting here in the City Hall.
Wow, it's so fast.
Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Good evening, Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacita, Commissioner.
Doug Gillian, Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you all know, this has been Oregon sesquicentennial year and one of Oregon City's contributions, and we've had many. In fact, we planted, finally planted 150 trees in the last two weekends, so that's pretty exciting. But the other thing we're doing is having a sesquicentennial moment, a rare and unusual and interesting fact about our community. And we have found so many interesting things as the city has prepared to move. And this was found, I know you noticed the different sound when I wrapped the gavel, because this little box was found by our city recorder, deep in the safe in her office. When you opened it up, it has a little bit of white and blue ribbon, and this very special gavel that I'm going to tell you about, because it was accompanied with a very brown and old newspaper article, which says the following. This is a very special gavel, and it, this gavel was made for the formal banquet commemorating the dedication of the Willamette River Arch Bridge. The gavel contains 10 different kinds of wood, and when you look up here, they're actually numbered, so there's 1, 7, 8, you can tell all the different kinds of wood, which I will tell you about. And after, this was to be used in the bridge ceremony, and after the arch bridge was dedicated, then it was to be given to the city as a relic about which are linked some of the most interesting chapters of state and coast history. So, these are the 10 woods used in this very historic gavel. One, Oregon grape, which you of course know as the state flower of Oregon, confirmed in 1892. Two, guanayacum, which is a very hard and durable dense wood that was taken from a tie, a railroad tie, used in the construction of the Panama Railroad across the Isthmus in 1864. The wood is actually a potentially endangered species at this time, so it is not used, I had to look it up on Wikipedia to find out about it. Number three is Royal Anne Cherry, and this is taken from a tree brought across the Oregon Trail in 1847 by Henderson LeWelling, who you know as the father of the nursery industry in Clackamas County, and what this tree, that this was taken from, was planted just north of current Milwaukee. One of the 800 trees that he bought. Number four is Douglas fir, taken from one of the timbers of the old bridge, as it was being dismantled to make way for what they said was the excellent and impressive new structure. Number five is dogwood. This is taken from a tree which grew near the site of the first sawmill in American Territory west of the Rocky Mountains, which was east of Fort Vancouver in 1827 and 1828. And then number six is wild crabapple, and this is taken from a tree that grew on the Ewing Young Ranch, about six miles west of the present town of Newburgh. Ewing, Ewing Young, was the first independent settler in the Oregon country, beginning in the latter part of 1834. And when he died, the new, the settlers realized that they had, had no laws, no regulations to take care of his estate. So, they called the meeting of the settlers and established a probate court and an administrator, and it was, that was the first act of civil government on the Pacific Coast, and this was the first step leading to the provisional government in May 2nd, 1848. Number seven, locust, taken from a tree planted by, a familiar name to Oregon City, William L. Holmes, a pioneer of 1843, and is one of the best-known citizens of Clackamas County. Of course, we know about his donation gland claim, just south of, the article says, Oregon City, now in Oregon City, known as the Rose Farm. That's a locust. Pine is number eight, and this is taken on a tree, from a tree on the coast, within the limits, city limits of the current town of Seaside, where a detachment of five men from Lewis and Clark's Exploratory Winter Camp at Fort Clatse were taking salt from the, making salt from the ocean water. Number nine is black walnut, and you can see all the different colors, and this was taken from one of the largest trees of its kind known in Oregon, and it stands in Eugene, and it forms the center of the gavel. You can see that dark color. And number 10 is yew, Y-E-W. This was taken from a tree in Shampui, a village where the provisional government was organized, and this kind of wood was used by the Indians for making bows before the introduction of firearms. So, this very historic gavel I'm using tonight on our final meeting here in this City Hall, which probably none of us will miss, but it's always interesting, as we're establishing new history, that we take some of the old history with us, so, because we're linking old and new as we establish new traditions and new ordinances and new resolutions going forward. So, tonight, I will use this in honor of our move and in honor of our last meeting and in honor of those who, I don't know who made it, actually, it was commissioned by the head of the, curator of the Oregon Historical Society, George H. Heims, a name again that you might, might recognize. So, your sesquicentennial moment for tonight.
I don't know that I want to do one, Al. That should have been the last one, well, it is for here, but...
It is the last one for here.
I'm just wondering, I'm wondering if the Holmes locust was the, was the seed source of all the invasive locusts we have growing along the rivers now.
Yeah, I don't know. You'll have to take the DNA and check it out.
Wow, that's incredible.
Okay, so moving right along to citizen comments, and I have one card this evening, Kathy Hogan. As you come forward, I'll just remind the audience that when you come to speak to us, please give your name, the city in which you live, and then you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Kathy.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's Kathy Hogan. I'm coming on many multiples, so I get confused.
Is your microphone on, Kathy?
Yes.
Is this green?
Do I have to speak a little closer?
I'm not yelling at my husband, so... Many people have heard that. Okay, there's Fillis Stocking, Fillis Hart. We are really hurting a lot on funds. It's a very bad year. Right now, our shelves are empty of soap for men. We have shampoo, shampoo is not even enough to bother to bring somebody in to start doing socks, it's like six bottles or something, so we are, you know, deodorant, we're in need of a lot of things. Our funding this year from Miller Paint is not near what it has been in the past, so we really need a lot of people to step up to play. We have our drop sites at, you know, like the library, City Hall, Clackamas Federal Credit Union, and the library, so there's, they're all over, and there's a website, I forget if it's www.fillisstocking. Anybody that's been around long enough knows that there's a big need. There's toys, teens, soaps, gloves, hats, and games, and our teens are the hardest, especially, you know, for young men and stuff, so that if you don't get a sock, take a sack full of shampoo and soap, toothpaste or whatever, and leave it at the library, I'll pick it up. And I want to thank whoever left the material to make stockings that I picked up yesterday, it was wonderful. We need more material, and we need, I mean, I got a long list. Yarn, because we're going to have, we have somebody that will knit slippers for us, so there's all kinds of needs that we have. Then, my November 19th is Hazel Grove West Lynn Farm Neighborhood Association. We have the library director coming, and the school superintendent, and it's South End and Hazel Grove, and it's at the Methodist Church at 7:00 off of South End Road, anybody and everybody's welcome, pass the word. And, let's see, then I think the final is, hopefully you got the CPO letter from the CPO, Central Point, Leland Road, on Traffic Like, at the four-way stop on South End and Warner Parrot.
I don't think the commissioners have, I mean, there's been emails going around.
Our minutes, yeah.
I don't think we got a specific one from them.
Well, it's...
Make sure it gets to... Well, I don't have it, but it is coming, and it should, it was supposed to be coming to you directly, you know, stating that if they would, even, the CPO would like to have the light replaced, feels it's a safety hazard with the schools so near and everything. And of course, you got our minutes from the Hazel Grove South End Neighborhood Association saying their concerns, and I just would like it to be addressed.
Thank you.
For everybody, thank you.
I'd like to request at the next meeting, perhaps Nancy Kreshar, to talk about the process that went, that the Transportation Advisory Committee went through on that particular intersection.
Thank you. Okay, as we look at the agenda, is there any, are there any items that any commissioner wishes moved out of the consent agenda for special consideration?
Yes.
Number one?
I'd like to pull minutes from, from a 20 first, 8E.
8E. Okay. Is that it?
No. To the extent that the concerns I raised in the Urban Renewal Commission minutes, I think also apply to probably all of these minutes as well, I think we should just pull the minutes out of the consent agenda.
You mean, consider each of them separate?
I think he's probably talking about a general discussion of the minutes.
Yeah, because...
Do you want to do that prior to the consent agenda or after?
Prior.
It doesn't matter to me. We can, we can do it prior to the consent agenda.
Okay.
I don't care about the, you know, the Comcast franchise being pulled, I mean, that to me can remain in the consent agenda, but I do want to have a minutes discussion.
Yeah, okay, well, let's have the minutes discussion, then decide about the minutes, but right now, we've only pulled one off the consent agenda, we'll see about that later. Then, have the discussion. Commissioner West?
Is it of any concern that, so we're basically adding another item on the agenda that hasn't been posted tonight for public discussion, and hasn't been, so people aren't here to testify, so is it an appropriate place to have a minute discussion and a procedural discussion without it being given a proper notice, like other items on our agenda?
I think it's okay to have a discussion of the minutes. If we're going to make decisions, then it should be held over to a decision-making time, but the discussion's...
I will note the city attorney was nodding as you made that statement.
Yeah, that's the way we've done it before.
So, my other, this is just a small, picky little detail, but is, should Nancy, Ms. Kreshar, should C come before B? Shouldn't we amend the CIP before we sign the agreement? It's just a small thing.
You can do, you can sign, you can authorize the agreement without having the project on the CIP?
Okay. With that, we will take the minutes in the new and revised order. All right, we will move right into the general business, and the first item that we have is one we held over, and from last meeting, which was very full. So, this is Resolution 928. They propose solid waste rate adjustment for Oregon City garbage B&amp;B leasing. If you guys, Mike and Pam would like to come forward, and who's going to give the staff report on this? Is that you? Who's introducing this? Don't all speak at once. Mr. Wimmer, finance.
Mayor and Commissioners, the B&amp;B leasing is coming, requesting an increase, as you recall, last year, they came and they hadn't been here for several years, and so they had a rate increase that covered several-year period, and you asked them to come back annually and have smaller increases rather than waiting two or three years, and so they've met with you in a work session and gone over the numbers, and I think they've, you've had questions, and I think they've answered them, and they're here to try to get the resolution passed and answer any more questions.
Thank you, welcome. And thank you for including the comparative rates with the other cities in the region and the county, that's helpful.
And I pretty much...
Would you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Mike Capoy, and I'm with B&amp;B Leasing, and this is Pamela Bloom, and she's with B&amp;B Leasing. And we're here tonight to find out from the commission if there's any questions that anyone has relative to the presentation that we made about two to three weeks ago, when we had reviewed what the various rates were, and Commissioner Neely, you had requested that we went through and made sure that we added the city of West Lynn in the comparison, so we went ahead and we made sure that we added the city of West Lynn in this, and so rather than take a lot of time to be redundant and go back through the report again, I'll just open it up if there's any questions.
Thank you. I believe that you made the presentation at a work session.
I did.
And so, if you could, because you are talking to people in our webstreaming audience that don't know, could you just give the, maybe, the reasons that you're requesting a rate increase?
The primary reasons why we're looking for a rate increase is Metro ended up increasing the tipping fees, and so accordingly, we had to pass those on, and those tipping fees were increased approximately 6% as of August 1st of 2009, and that's the majority of the rate increase, and then the other items that were general inflationary items, such as payroll, and payroll tax benefits, and the health and welfare costs that we had associated with that, along with fuel. But the primary driver was the tipping fees passed on by Metro.
Okay. Thank you. Now, questions from the commission? Commissioner Neely.
Just looking at the, you've got, you've got examples of three rates, of course, I'm sure you're asking for the higher one, but...
4%, the middle one.
No, the middle one.
The middle one.
When I'm looking at them, though, the, the distribution of the increases is, I guess it's a little bit confusing to me. If you look at the 3%, you're given the 20-gallon cart as the highest, if you're talking about residential weekly pickup, and that's what I'm going to talk about, you have that as the highest. If you go to the 4%, it's the second lowest, as it is for the 4.5%, and I was wondering if there's any specific reason for the, the, number one, the difference actually in the distribution over the sizes. I mean, why, why are, why are the rate increases shown as different for the various sizes of container, and why, why wouldn't there be, if there's a reason for the difference over those size containers, why is it structured differently in the different rates?
What we did is, we tried to round to the nickel, and so when we ended up rounding to the nickel, that was how the, the numbers ended up coming out. While they're relatively small numbers, we tried to adopt what Clackamas County did, rather than have odd cent numbers, we rounded to the nickel, and in doing so, that's how the math worked.
Mike, I think that you talked before to, about, a little different topic, but that the rates on the larger gallons, the larger cart sizes were essentially to encourage people to conserve?
We were hoping to have, and when we take a look at Oregon City and, and West Lynn and Oregon City is a real good comparison, in Oregon City, we've had a continual decreasing in size of the carts, and we're probably now about 70 to 80% in the 35-gallon cart, which is pretty impressive compared to where it was in the past. And if you were to take a look at West Lynn, while I didn't have the exact numbers, we got the overall flavor from the city when we contacted them, that they thought it was probably around 60% in the 60-gallon cart, so, or 65, and so...
Wow.
There's quite a different swing, and, you know, and I can't really come back and give you all the demographics, whether they have larger families or all the subtleties and nuances that would affect it, but it says that what's happening is Oregon City is doing a very good job in terms of diverting from the solid waste into the recycling, and I think in a large part, as the company has introduced the 95-gallon roll cart for the recycling, that's made quite a difference in terms of the amount that's gone over into the recycling. And here again, I can't speak to say are people trying to go to smaller cart sizes as a result of the economy, I just don't know that, but it seems like there's a direct cause and effect relationship with the larger recycling carts.
Oregon City, I'm proud of you.
Yes.
Did you, were you going to say something? Okay, is there a motion, please? One more question?
I'll move to, I'll move to support the, I don't know quite how to phrase it, but I'll move to support Resolution 0928, the proposed solid rate adjustment at 4%.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or discussion on this motion? Not, Nancy, please poll the commission.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much. Next are two motions that are related to our Main Street in Oregon City, and for the first is an intergovernmental agreement with ODOT for right-of-way services. So, we'll call on Nancy Kreshar, our Public Works Director and City Engineer, for the report.
Good evening, Mayor Norris and City Commissioners. So, the agreement that you're being asked to approve will involve us depositing $10,000 with ODOT for them to oversee right-of-way acquisition for the Main Street sidewalk project, which is in the planning stages. We want to position this project for future funding opportunities, whatever they may be, and in order to do that, it is beneficial to have it be construction-ready and to not have to go through the project planning and design, because, especially if you want to move expeditiously on your funding, such as the economic stimulus packages in transportation that have been distributed throughout the state, if you had to obtain easements or right-of-way, you really wouldn't have been able to meet the schedule, the deadlines to use the stimulus money. So, we believe that it would, it's very prudent for us to get the easements needed for this project, and interestingly enough, all of the easements are temporary construction easements, all of the work would actually be done in the right-of-way, but we've been advised by ODOT that the federal, any use of federal funding, ODOT would require that we obtain temporary construction easements, even rather than primitive entries that we often obtain for city projects. So, we thought, well, let's move ahead and get this, this intergovernmental agreement in place, so that ODOT can indeed review all of our right-of-way proceedings, and as they need to do, they need to review them and approve them for us to qualify for any federal funding in the future.
I want to applaud you and your staff for, for doing this. I think it's this kind of anticipation that, that you, your department has done that allowed us to get the projects that we already have, that are funded through the ARR, so...
And it is important to make sure that nobody believes there's any guarantee we're going to do this work, the construction, in the next two or three years. We hope we could start the work within the next two or three years, we're especially hopeful, because ODOT has said that they would support us on funding applications because of somewhat of the impacts of having the arch bridge rehabilitation project, closing the bridge for two years, that I think they wanted to make sure they could provide any support they possibly could for us, for funding opportunities.
So, at least gets it in the queue. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I had several questions, several of them which were answered, and I think that the first was just the order of it, if, you know, should we wait till we get funding in order to do this, and I think you made that pretty clear, why that was, why we were doing it in this order. I still have concerns on sidewalks, so, so I want to at least state the concerns I see with sidewalks and our consistency throughout the city, and how we deal with sidewalks, and I know we've occasionally mentioned that we at some point need to get on some sort of a same page and a plan for sidewalks, and, so I wonder when that comes into play. The other, and part of that is because of blocking mass amounts of, of the city, especially in McLaughlin neighborhood, and knowing that the sidewalks on Main Street are a lot better than the sidewalks throughout the entire city. The sidewalks on Main Street are, are not bad at all. So, that's one thing in my head. The next thing is, and I think you kind of said that, you know, this could be a two- or three-year thing, so I think that kind of, my question was about really if this was something that could happen at the same time the bridge was closed, which I think would be a disaster, but also, I am thinking about the future in terms of this study in term, the study that is going to be happening in terms of going from one-way to two-way traffic, and I'm assuming that we wouldn't be redoing all the sidewalks on Main Street before we knew what we were going to do with the streets. And so that, the timing of those things, you know, they all are intertwined, and so I would be concerned about, you know, redoing all the sidewalks and then deciding, oh, well, we actually want to go to two-way traffic, and that's going to, may not affect the changing of the sidewalks, but it might change the effect of the landscaping or the...
The bulbouts.
So, right. So, I don't know if, if, those were the, the main concerns, and so maybe you can answer some of those.
Okay, regarding sidewalks in general in the community, I can't, that's really a city commission issue, but I can at least provide a little bit of information in terms of where we have invested in sidewalks in the past, tend to be on commercial corridors, Molalla Avenue, 7th Street, those were both where we did complete sidewalk replacements and streetscape, because I think part of it was the, the public investment to encourage redevelopment and to encourage new businesses to establish on these, actually, Molalla Avenue and 7th Street are mixed-use corridors, and downtown, of course, is a mixed-use downtown zoning district. So, that, that might be a little different than residential sidewalks, it's just something to think about. And then, the circulation study, that is beginning as well, as you mentioned, and we are very cognizant that we need to make sure we're coordinating whatever the outcome could be from that with, with the sidewalks, and I think the main thing that would be impacted is signage and the bulbouts, the intersections where we have the diagonal parking, and that's something we're keeping an eye on. I believe that circulation study's probably going to be starting in November and December, it'll probably be completed in the next six to nine months, Commissioner, so we hope to have some of those answered, those questions answered before we go into final design on the project. And in the meantime, the project team on both of those is, they're, everybody's aware of it, we've got both hands talking to the other, and, and I think that everybody knows, oh, what are we going to do? What about the circulation study? So, we're very aware of that coordination is needed.
So, before the project would actually start, it would come back to us before then? Or, I mean, does this give the okay, we're, I mean, if we approve both these tonight and we get the funding, it's going to happen?
Well, if, before we start any design on the project, right now, we're planning it, and I'm actually getting some, working on the work scope for design, and that kind of a contract would come to the city commission for approval. So, there will be more discussion that will come to the commission.
And is the...
Looking for maps?
No, on the back page... No, on the back page, I thought it was on the back page. Oh, I guess it's on the other, the other agenda item. It says the total project costs $3 million. But that's, I mean, that's assuming, I mean, most of that would be money from these other places that we hope to get, but we don't know what we're getting.
Yes.
But that's referring to the sidewalk project itself, not that $3 million, right?
The $3 million is the current estimate for the sidewalk project. And what would likely happen is, I would recommend that the city fund the design and development of the contract documents, and then the construction funding would be from another source. And there might be, there might be a minimum local match on that, usually about 10 and a half percent.
And I mean, I...
It depends on the...
I understand that this is, this is partly to help, I mean, this was born really out of the, the hope that the state would help in some way to mitigate the bridge closure to some degree. I mean, this was kind of born of that. And so I understand that. When I see funding source, $10,000, Transportation SDCs, and then, you know, there'll be $3 million, up to $3 million, wherever that money comes from, I guess the thing that concerns me is that we have sidewalks all over the city that are in poor shape and roads that are in poor shape. But we're going to spend $3 million, no matter where it comes from really, on sidewalks that aren't that bad. And so that's a concern a little bit.
Well, we'll have to have some, some public meetings, because I really, this is probably a project that has been, the desire I've heard for this project has come from the downtown businesses and the Main Street organization. And so there's probably some interaction that should occur there. So there's a full understanding of where the project is, where the ideas are coming from.
The difference here, Ms. Kraschow, if I'm correct, is actually what we're seeking here is funding from a, funding from a different source that actually could provide that. So it's an opportunity to...
Right. And then I might also add, Commissioner, that typically when we get money from federal funding, federal transportation funding is not approved for spending on local streets. And it typically is, we would be looked favorably because this is for regional center, they're looking for economic...
Connectivity.
Yeah, ways to improve pedestrian access. And of course, you know, I mentioned in the reports that the parking studies has indicated that there's a desire for more lighting in the downtown, connecting the parking lots and up. So that, it's multifaceted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Neely?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the project that, where there's a fair amount of right-of-way investment. I'm not sure that we would have that much right-of-way investment here, but that was, that was actually Beaver Creek between, it was a fair amount. And we actually designed it before we made decisions in terms of right-of-way acquisitions. These are more for easement purposes, you're saying?
All temporary construction.
All for all temporary. Now, do we normally do that before we have a design?
Um...
I understand that this is, this is the mechanism that we must do.
This is unusual, because we usually aren't replacing sidewalks, there's usually more involved with our projects, with a roadway project. So this is unusual, it's a unique, it's a unique project. So I'm not sure if I'd really want to compare them.
Okay, well, my question comes to this, then. Were we to take this on ourselves with our own funding, would we, would we have, would we have done such a thing? And would we, would have we committed the $10,000 to do it or not?
We would probably ask for right-of-entry permits from the property owners, and it would be done farther along in the process. This is really preparing for the use of federal funding.
But is this cost comparable to what we might see in another project that wasn't funded in this manner?
The $10,000? The $10,000 is typical for an ODOT review.
Okay.
It's the ODOT review. And then the other thing I would like you to know is that we're doing all of this in staff, which usually we hire a consultant to do, even if, even for temporary construction easements. So we're trying to really keep our costs down. I mean, this is, there's about 62 temporary construction easements that we're seeking, and we're looking for donations, although we're not requiring that. We're, you know, advising them that we can get an appraisal and offer them the results of appraisal if need be. But there's a real partnership, I think, that the downtown sees in this. And we're doing all that work, Kathy Griffin's doing all that work. So we're keep, trying to keep city costs way down.
Okay, Commissioner West?
Can I make a motion here?
You may.
I'd like to move the, move approval of the IGA with ODOT for the right-of-way services on Main Street from 5th to 15th, downtown Oregon City, including 7th and 10th Streets.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Next is a related item, and that is Resolution 930, which amends our capital improvement facilities plan for transportation projects to add this project. So Nancy, a little bit more about this one.
This is a, this, to amend our capital facilities plan for transportation, we need to pass a resolution. And I've tried to, in the resolution, provide reasons why this project would be suitable for adding to our capital improvement plan. And we, in order to continue to plan this project, it's important for it to be in a capital improvement program. The idea of having adopted capital improvement programs is that you're not just working on projects that could be in front of a commissioner's house or something like that. And that's supposed to be kind of a joke. But in other words, they're not supposed to, they're supposed to come out of a publicly, a public process where there've been, there's been input from various stakeholders to agreement that this is a project that should go on our capital improvement program and that can be funded with city dollars. The other reason, of course, is if we're going to be applying for other funding sources, metro, federal, ODOT, whatever, we have to get, it has to be in our TSP, it has to be in the regional transportation plan, and then it's allowed to get forwarded into actual improvement programs for funding. So there, a lot of this is a technicality, but it's a very important technicality. And I also wanted to make sure that we referenced the most, the recently adopted system development charge methodology to make it clear that this project, while it certainly cannot be anywhere near fully funded with system development charges, there is a percentage of it that can be funded with system development charges, recognizing that with the development of the regional center downtown, there will be an increased demand for pedestrian improvements in downtown Oregon City.
Okay, questions on this one or a motion, please? Commissioner Neely?
Just a brief question. I do see we've got representatives from the Traffic Advisory Committee here. So I presume, I don't know what was specific reference here, but this has actually gone through the Traffic Advisory Committee for their...
The Transportation Advisory Committee.
The Transportation Advisory Committee.
It's been affirmed that it has.
It's been affirmed by, yes, okay.
Okay. Do you have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move the passage of Resolution 0930 to amend the capital improvement facilities plan for transportation project to add this particular project, Main Street, 5th to 15th Street, including 7th and 10th Streets.
Thank you. Second, please.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there other comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Next is an authorization to use a shortlist of pre-qualified engineering consulting firms to provide professional services in several categories: transportation planning, transportation infrastructure, utility infrastructure, and geotechnical engineering and geology. So Nancy, you again.
The commission saw a similar request in a meeting in October for the, to create a shortlist of consultants to use for surface water management and water resources projects. And this one, this request then tonight is to ask for your approval on the other four shortlists of just the, the transportation planning, the civil engineering for transportation infrastructure, and the utility infrastructure improvements are fairly straightforward. Basically, we would use the shortlist of consultants to seek proposals and select consultants to do work either in our capital improvement programs or small works projects that come up from time to time through our operations group. Well, not from time to time, they come up a lot from our operations group. And then also there's some master planning that we feel like these consultants are capable of completing for us, is if, if we need to have master planning work done. So we, we sent out a fairly comprehensive and lengthy request for qualifications, and we had, I think it was 41 responses. There's been a lot of reading going on in, in the department over the last couple of months. But then we, in accordance with the statutes, we established selection teams that reviewed all of the proposals and scored them and came up with these shortlists of the top, top selected consulting firms for each of the categories. I wanted to note also in the geologic, the geologic and geotechnical category, this list of consultants will not only be used by the city for city projects, but it will also be, there's actually a separate list, there're just little differences between the three lists for geotechnical. And one of them will also be used to give to the public. Our building official often asks for recommendations on consultants to refer homeowners to or businesses that come in and they, they may have had a landslide in their yard or other things, and they really don't know where to go. So we don't just give out names of consultants because that's not a good idea. So instead, we went through this process that had specific criteria, and we are able to provide a pre-qualified list of consultants to those folks. And then it'll also be used by private developers and homeowners if, when they're going through a geologic hazards applica, land use application, the new code that the commission adopted several months ago now calls out for peer review on geologic hazards applications. So I've tried to provide a summary of the consultants, I've tried to provide scores, and then I also wanted to make sure you, if you were interested, you could read all the information that was included in the request for qualifications itself.
It was very detailed, and I really appreciate having that, the detail is, is good to see since we don't do this every day. Are these selected firms as public as on our website, or is this something that you keep, a list you keep internally?
It's public, it's on our website. It was, actually, it was posted on there, letting people know the City Commission would be reviewing this and asking, would be asking your approval tonight to... So this is public information.
Public information, okay. Other questions? Commissioner Nocita?
I'd just like to make the comment that if it's confirmation of a lack of favoritism in the selection process, I would just like to note that my former employer is one of the firms not selected to be shortlisted.
No. [laughing].
I may not really be an issue if he was the former employer, but...
Right, exactly.
I do have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Neely?
It's a problem of probably being too detailed in your presentation. And it was particularly true in the, in fact, it was true in the transportation, transportation plan piece and the transportation infrastructure. I don't think it was in the other two categories, but I couldn't help noticing that in those selected, there were some of them in which, and it wasn't always a senior reviewer, reviewed it in a lower category, whereas others, in fact, in the lowest, and some others did it at the highest, and the average came out, I guess, that it was selected. And I'm just, was curious, is, I presume these, these reviews are done independently, so people form these lists and then they come together.
Yes.
Was either the opportunity then to, that you as a group discussed your decision base for it?
Yes.
So where you had these situations in which, in which you had, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to signal that, of course, but where you had some review quite high by a couple of reviewers, and actually reviewed quite low, you had a chance to discuss the reasons why that was true? And was there, in fact, a general consensus after the fact among the reviewers there as, as to the individuals being on the shortlist?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Time for a motion, please?
Well, I'll move to authorize the use of the shortlist of pre-qualified engineering consulting firms to provide the professional services in the categories evaluated. A second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Is there further comment or discussion? Commissioner West?
Ms. Kraschow, this does not limit work being done in Oregon City to these firms, or does it?
It does not. If for some reason we wanted to go up for a request for proposals for a particular project, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's important to point out, since it wasn't in the motion, that, because I don't think you said that, that these, we use these for three years?
That's right, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods.
Then we start all over again. Okay, other comments? Nancy, ready for the vote?
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. And the next item of discussion is a, is a Resolution 9-27 to establish bylaws for the Transportation Advisory Committee. Nancy Kraschow, a lot in transportation tonight.
Yes, thank you. The Transportation Advisory Committee has been in existence since 1996, and it, the committee felt like the bylaws were rather weak. There were some, some rules set up for the committee when it was adopted, when it was approved by the City Commission back in 1996. But they did feel that they needed some, a more formal structure for various reasons. And so they put together a subcommittee and, that wrote these bylaws, and they took it to the Transportation Advisory Committee in September, and they unanimously agreed to adopt the bylaws pending passing of a resolution by the City Commission. And I would like to mention that Bill Blanchard, who's been our chair of the Transportation Advisory Committee, he's the current chair, he's here, and if you have any questions of him, please feel free to ask. And then also, another member of the Transportation Advisory Committee is here, Betty Mum. And certainly if she, you know, any questions you would have for the committee, I'd welcome you to address them to these individuals.
Thank you. Other questions? I do have a comment card from William Gifford. William, would you like to come forward?
Madam Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I reside in Oregon City, and I'm just here as a citizen tonight. Having read the, read the agenda and read the proposed bylaws, I have two very gentle suggestions that I would offer for consideration. One is throughout the bylaws, two offices are referred to as chairperson and vice-chairperson, and I'd just suggest that you shorten that up for convenience and conservation to just chair and vice-chair. A second suggestion, this, yeah, it's not earth-shattering, but you know, it's, it's really, vice-chairperson is just a little unwieldy. Second is, back in the duties section of those bylaws, I thought it was peculiar that that there is an admonition of, one of the duties is, is a suggestion to refer to each other by common titles of Mr. and Mrs., et cetera. And although I think that's a very polite thing to do and very appropriate, and I noticed this in City Commission meetings as opposed to work sessions where first names are admitted, but I find it peculiar to have it in a bylaw when it seems to be more of a protocol or a tradition or the way you do things. I don't know that the city has set that precedent by requiring people to be addressed by titles. I just thought it was peculiar. And those are the only comments that I had to make about it.
Thank you. Thank you. This might be something that Chair Blanchard would like to comment on, would you?
Is that Chair Blanchard or Chairperson?
They're not adopted yet, yeah, they're not adopted yet, so.
Chair.
Actually, in the, in our charter, it's chairman, so.
When we put these bylaws together, we tried to be consistent with the resolutions that have been passed in ninety-six, ninety-nine, and oh-two, I believe. And then we had our city attorney review these, so as far as whether we're called Chair, Chairperson, or whatever, that's no, I don't think it makes any difference to any of the commission, committee members, so it'd be your pleasure, whatever you want to do in that respect. Shorten it, that's fine with me, I'm sure it's fine with them. I don't think we need to go through any rigmarole to have that happen. If you want to make an amendment to the motion or whatever the procedure is, it's fine with me.
Okay. I, I would like that, I think that's pretty consistent with what we do through most of the city. I haven't seen that used in any of the other documents that we've passed in my seven years. Also, the chair thing, the persons, we can strike the persons and they're, it's throughout, so that's a, I think, a good suggestion. The, the how to address is an encouragement. It does seem odd, it's only an encouragement, which I assume is designed to lend a little more air of professionalism and dignity to the proceedings, so I really don't have any objections to that encouragement. But, any, any questions while he's, while Chairperson Blanchard is here?
We did try to synthesize, Nancy Hyde was nice enough through Kathy Griffin to give us copies of all of the bylaws and the various committees and commissions in the city, so we tried to synthesize what seemed to be a reasonable thing. And I would like to take this time to thank my committee for voting these in and getting them on board, and also specifically Betty Shasma and Mary Smith for spending the summer with me working on these bylaws. I just wanted to publicly thank them for that.
Thank you, and that's not an easy job for those, those people who have spent time doing that. People tear apart things like just certain words in the bylaws, you just can't, uh.
Moving right along.
Thank you. Mr. Neely, your motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna make a comment. I recall, who was the courses back in the late sixties, early seventies and...
When most of us weren't born yet, but...
But anyway, going to, going to the, one of my mentor's houses before I went overseas, he had a dinner party for me and I referred to his wife as Mrs. Clarkson and she used her, she used his surname all right, but she looked at me, she glared at me and she says, "Mrs. is derived from mistress and I'm nobody's mistress." The thing is, I have no idea how to refer to a woman anymore, I really don't. And so, I don't, miss, miz, misses, I got, I have no clue. And, and so, you know, I would almost like to see that formality not dealt with and let the, let, let, let the, let the body itself deal with it as they will. If somebody expresses a preference to be referred to as, in a certain way, let them express that preference and I, I prefer not to see that encouragement for that reason.
I, I think I agree with that, too.
I'm fine with that, too. So, since I heard three encouragements, can we consider these then with chair inserted and changed whenever that occurs and then take out article, section A of Article VII? So that that would be renumbered?
I might make mention that we do serve to advise you, the City Commissioners, so if that's what you want to do, that's what we do.
Commissioner West?
Move approval as amended.
Second. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or need for clarification? Okay, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you for your work on that. The last piece of general business is local agency agreement twenty-five thousand two-hundred-seven between ODOT and Oregon City for a cooperative improvement agreement for a traffic signal upgrade at ninety-nine E and Main Street. Again, Nancy Crashard, what a busy night you're having.
Thank you. This is another agreement, as the mayor mentioned, and ODOT is going to be replacing one of the traffic signals down at Main Street and the McLaughlin Boulevard. In so doing, they pulled out our old intergovernmental agreement and chose to update it. And what they're asking for us to do is essentially in the, for the long term, is to pay for the power for the signal, and that's something that is standard in communities where you have a traffic signal on an ODOT facility. And then the other thing is that we are, we have the responsibility of maintaining the vehicle detector loops on Main Street and on the Blue Heron side, so that, that's in our right of way, if we're gonna do any paving or digging up or whatever, we're, we're required to maintain those loops.
Any questions about this? Now the motion, please.
I move to approve local agency agreement number twenty-five thousand two-hundred-seven between Oregon Department of Transportation and Oregon City which establishes agreement terms for funding, design, construction, and ongoing operation and maintenance of the signal system located at the intersection of ninety-nine E and Main Street.
A second, please.
I'll second, but I, I have a point I want to discuss after the motion passes or doesn't pass.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely. For discussion, is there a comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Now Commissioner Neely.
The coordination of signals during rush hours all the way through McLaughlin and Boulevard is an issue. They may, I do not know, I've got a feeling that maybe their non-trip signals, ones that aren't tripped by traffic entering McLaughlin, maybe, may, may all be coordinated during the rush hours, but the trip signals are not, that is, and I, I don't know if we're coordinating our, our signals, we're over a very short stretch of McLaughlin, but I don't know if those signals are gonna be coordinated in this process.
They are interconnected.
They are interconnected.
And they're, right now, they're probably on some very odd timing and they might even be on manual, there are certain times when they're on manual because of all the construction that's going on.
Right.
But when the project is completed, let's see how they perform as they're interconnected. And then if we have changes we want to be, we want to ask ODOT to make, we can bring it up with them then.
And are these, are any of these signals tripped? I presume they are, that is, they, as opposed to being just on a regular time schedule.
Oh, yeah, no, they all have loops.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't, I don't know why there's such a problem because I've been told that, you know, it's just a double toggle situation and you should, on those trip signals, you should still be able to coordinate those things all through the system.
Right.
And we don't. Well, we is not Oregon City, but we, we in, in general don't.
Let's see how they, when we're finished, because right now, even though the loops are there, they may not be all working together because of the construction that's going on. They're not, what's going, they probably, once all of the signals are activated for good and we don't have lanes closing from time to time, then they'll go into the signal cabinets and do the software. And in fact, I think those they can even, those they might be able to remotely control from Region One headquarters in Portland.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a discussion item, but before we discuss the minutes, I would like to take a five-minute recess. We are back in session and we have before us a discussion item brought up by Commissioner Nocita about minutes, so Commissioner Nocita, it's all yours.
During the Urban Renewal Commission meeting this, this afternoon, we had a really interesting and kind of vigorous discussion about minutes when we went to approve the minutes for that night, that, an earlier session. And I raised an issue that we'll probably be discussing when we have a work session on November sixteenth, I think that's scheduled for, regarding minutes. Specifically, what state statute does and does not require that minutes have in them. And I cited a statute, ORS one ninety-two dot six fifty subsection D that requires that minutes include, quote, "the substance of any discussion on any matter." And we had a long discussion about what that term in the statute means. I had pointed out some sections of those minutes where there was stated in the minutes that a discussion occurred about this matter, but what, what the discussion consisted of were not in the minutes and by a four to four vote, those minutes were not approved. In my review of the minutes of the City Commission work sessions and, and formal meetings, I found some similar gaps, if I can refer to them as such, in the minutes we're being asked to, we were being asked to approve, approved tonight by, on the consent agenda. And I will point out one such similarity in the proposed October twentieth, twenty-nine minutes of the City Commission work session, there is a discussion on page three, there are some passages where, for example, we, the minutes read, "there was discussions about the options for this facility," and then further on down the page, "the Commission discussed the value of consultants." And then even, again, there's, further down the page, it says, "there was more discussion about consultants and the AKT report," referring to the report by AKT consultants on the Clackamas Heritage Partners. Now for consistency, we kind of took the decision to, that those minutes from the Urban Renewal Commission would be brought back to flesh out those passages where there was not a recollection of the discussion, there was just mention that there was a discussion. So for consistency, I wanted to raise that we should probably do the same for the minutes in those similar passages in the City Commission minutes.
Okay, I think to continue the discussion where we left off with the Urban Renewal Commission, again, in my mind, I remember also being a first-year mayor and other first-year commissioners, it seems more important at that time to make sure that what we said and how it was said in the minutes reflects accurately what we meant. As time goes on, we rely, I think, speaking for myself only, less and less on the minutes and more and more on now, the web streaming. Because if I want to know exactly what happened, test my memory, the minutes really are just a summary and I think we're so fortunate to be able to have a device like web streaming. But, and then, so part of the discussion that we had, I think, probably should bring to this meeting as well, was with our attorney on how web streaming fits into, because it's the whole of the meeting, fits into minutes and how, how they either fit together or do not fit together. Could you kind of give some more comments on, on that? Because I think that's really relevant to our discussion.
Sure. And what I'd, I'd start with is, you know, what, what the statute require, which is that the public body provide for the sound, video, or digital recording or the taking of written minutes of all of its meetings. So you need to, to either have minutes or you could have a sound, digital, or video recording, you can't have...
So to, to interrupt you, it, so, I mean, I think this is not where we're headed, but, so we essentially could ditch written minutes and declare that our video-streamed recordings would be the accurate and legal representation of our meeting.
Yeah. You, you could do that. You could have no more written minutes if that's what you, you choose to do under our, the statute. Whether you choose to do that, you know, is, is really up to you. And I think the critical piece for the Commission is, what's the purpose to be served by the minutes and how do you best serve that purpose, both for your, your purposes as, as well as future Commissions or future citizens who want to know what the, the Commission is doing or has done? Sure, a written summary.
After the meeting, I was discussing, talking about records with our city recorder, who is the keeper of our, our records, and how do the way, the minutes that we keep, how does that compare with minutes that you know about in other jurisdictions? Because I know you are in contact with your colleagues throughout the state. What, do you have...
Yes, the, the, the City of Oregon City goes way beyond the minimum as far as what, what is required by the statute. Not only do we have a verbatim digital recording of, of all meetings, but we also have a summary in, in written form of, of the meetings. So we have, we have both, whereas only one is required. So we already are, are going way beyond. And then in addition to that, last year, we, we passed a, a resolution that put in place a migration plan, which is, you know, a, a plan to upgrade the, the type of format for, let's say, ten years from now, digital is something else, you know, how technology changes. And so we have a plan in place to, to make those changes throughout the course of the future. So that's, that's far beyond what I've been in touch with other cities as far as their, their minutes. Most cities do not have the web streaming or they, they do summary minutes as well. I don't know of any cities that do verbatim and I, and I'm very closely connected with my Recorder's Association. So all I can say is that we go, we go way beyond already and we do have the digital recording available at a moment's notice.
Commissioner West?
I guess I have two, two points to make about this and one, it reminds me of, oh, God, well, okay, I'll say it, when I started here on City Council and we read studies, 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 and I mean fat studies, and there's a lot of, or whatever, reports on things, and there's an executive summary at the beginning of the report. So, and sometimes you read the executive report and, or the summary, and if you need further clarification, you go and read in the entire report. And that's kind of how I see our minutes as a summary and we can fall back on the digital recording of the actual play-by-play minute by minute. And I think it's just terrific we have that. The second point on it was, I know Rocky, or Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Nocita weren't here, but when we were, made the decision to, and maybe Commissioner Neely remembers this discussion, when we, when we talked about investing in the Granica system and that this system was going to save our city financially because we had a record right there. So once we got all that automated, everything, it was gonna be this economy of scale, everything all digitally done, so a perfect record. So to see us here right now investing in a double system or a more extensive of a handwritten system or versus a verbatim like would be a, what did they call it?
Court reporter.
Court reporter. Well, that's just my, how I feel about it and they weren't here then to, to remember that decision and why we went that way and it would give us more transparency, easier for residents to use.
Commissioner Neely?
I think what we're laying out, I think, is a little bit of less concern of what, from my standpoint, with the possible exception of the, the one that Commissioner Smith wanted to pull, and I would like some detailed discussion about it, but is, where are we going from here? And what I, what I'd like to say is this, that I think within the, within the summary of there was a discussion, I think if in fact the discussion was such that it, that discussion really contributed to the vote, I think it's rather important. Where you, where you do not have all the commissioners agreeing on a given, on a given item and that discussion was critical to, I think it's nice to have that as a written comment. I don't, I don't expect anything verbatim, although that's what we essentially got when I first flew on the first commission I served on several years ago. And so I would, I would like to see at least that level of detail in it. If we're gonna talk about web streaming, we've got to have the capability here at, and I don't mean that the individual is, but we've got to have the capable, capability of a commissioner request a segment of the web stream to come... a commissioner request a segment of the web stream to come forward in a discussion. And I think we have to have a minute, so we can focus on what that discussion would be, so that we can actually go to that web stream in the commission chambers and pick that piece up. As long as we're able to do that, I have far less concern.
Could I just question you on that piece?
Yeah.
How often do you go to the minutes of the meeting during the middle of a meeting to see what happened last time?
Well, I haven't had the opportunity--
Because we don't have them.
Because we haven't--
We don't have them.
I mean, I want to congratulate the staff on getting these minutes from the last meeting. But the point is that that has not been a possibility.
Right, yeah.
And I've been yelling about that for three years.
Yeah, I know. If I could just talk about process, I believe that on our November 16th work session agenda is the topic of minutes, which includes executive session minutes and these. So if you have other points to put on the table, I think that's where we can also discuss further. Yes?
Just something to add to your thinking on this, too, particularly in terms of trying to pick from--
The choices.
--the tapes, and what is, in everyone's mind, relevant to the decision, is right now, that would be a decision of the transcriptionist.
Yes.
So--
That's tough.
The only way to really do that is probably for the person to be part of the staff and part of those meetings. And even then, you're going to run into some debates on it. You really, to really satisfy, I think, everyone's concerns on these issues, you're almost talking about a verbatim minutes. And we can do that, it's just a cost factor, so.
I guess I would just suggest that, I think it's very important for us to discover a purpose, personally, what are the purposes of the minutes for us, and why do you need, why does each of us need a certain level of specificity? I think that would be relevant to our discussion when we continue it on next Tuesday, in two Tuesdays. Commissioner Smith?
To me, it really comes down to having a backup, because in some cases, we don't have a backup. And so, to me, redundancy is important, and I, you know, I think--
I could address that. Not only is there the Granicus web streaming that is saved at the Granicus server, but we have purchased our own specially identified server just as a backup. So we have two copies, one in Granicus, one here, and in addition, Renee will always save a copy to the hard drive of the DVD recorder. So there are three different copies, you know, an original, so to speak, and then two backup copies of every meeting that's web streamed. So if something happens to one, if there's an earthquake in San Francisco, we still have ours here, where Granicus is in San Francisco.
I think I'm much more comfortable with where we're at from today forward. What bothers me is what happened from today back.
And what was that?
What was that?
Well, we've had, we've had some, you know--
Yeah.
We've had some issues with it, and so--
Yeah, with backup.
It's nice to have backups.
But the web streaming has, since we've begun, has never failed.
Okay, we'll continue the discussion then on--
Nor have we had issues with regular commission minutes. Again, executive sessions and those actually have been handled different in the past, and that is where, you know, this has led to this debate. I mean--
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll continue it then, since it hasn't been noticed as a piece of the agenda. So with that, now, does anyone need anything else pulled out of the consent agenda besides E?
Oh, actually--
Commissioner Nacita.
Before we leave that topic totally, I did want to propose that we invite Mr. Kobaysman to the November 16th work session, because I think a lot of the discussion is going to really, the assistance of the city attorney would be very helpful that night.
Okay. Is there any of those issues you could get out now, so that--
I--
Are we playing on coming anyway? I don't--
I mean, it needs to be invited.
Yeah.
Work sessions, I tend to come when I'm invited, so--
Of course. You can come anytime, as long as you're invited.
Right. He's an attorney. I think there's something wrong with this picture. Are there legal questions that you could ask tonight, so that it wouldn't be necessary?
I can prepare some questions in advance.
I think that would be good, that would be helpful. So, okay, thank you. Others? All right, let's move on. So the consent agenda is okay. So I would like a motion then for adoption of eight A through D.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Neely.
Wait, 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 wait.
Nancy?
Are we actually approving these minutes?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Okay. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West? Aye. Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
No.
Mayor Norris? Aye. Motion passes three, zero. And then the last-- Three to two.
Three, two.
Yes, right. Three, two. I've got numbers here, I should be able to read that. Okay. Sorry about that. Last is eight E, the minutes of October 21st. Commissioner Smith?
On page seven--
Second here.
--last paragraph, it was a topic I brought up regarding the previous meeting before, which was the discussion about the End of the Oregon Trail interpretive center site. And I think it covered most of it, but what I was, what I was actually talking about was referencing past meetings where we all, as a committee, used the words "facilities manager" rather than consultant. And so this just says that I stated we should hire a facilities manager, but I was also referencing the fact that we had used that term specifically in past meetings, and I'm pretty sure I stated that. And so I think that was a little unclear. And I don't ever remember saying that the facilities manager would operate the visitor's center. I was saying that the facilities manager would operate the End of the Oregon Trail site, and that might help with the situation, having one, or having a staff person for the visitor's center by themselves, because there would be a facilities manager on the site, not necessarily that that facilities manager would run the visitor's center. So I'd kind of like to check that and clean it up, because I don't think that this actually is accurate to what I was saying.
Can we hold these over then?
Yep.
Okay, great, we'll do that. So that concludes our business meeting. So communications first, beginning with our supposed to be retired city manager.
Do you want to move on this particularly?
No, it's--
We're going to bring it back, we'll check the tape and bring it back. Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the Commission, I do have a number of items this evening. The first is, I'm going to call on Ms. Crushour, she needs to talk to you about a change order with Holcomb Boulevard. So, Ms. Crushour?
Thank you, Ms. Patterson. The, we are in the middle of the construction on the Holcomb Boulevard Phase One project, which includes constructing sidewalks, essentially, and lighting on Holcomb Boulevard between Front Avenue and Holcomb School on one side. And a little background on that, the original Holcomb Boulevard pedestrian enhancement plan, which was essentially developed by the neighborhood along with our staff, was to use the existing right-of-way as much as possible, have little impact on trees and slopes along Holcomb Boulevard, and to keep it to very simple, straightforward design. And if opportunities would come up to acquire a right-of-way, we'd see how it went, if we could create landscape strips or other features. We really didn't want the city to be purchasing a lot of right-of-way because of the cost. They wanted to get project done instead of have it be so expensive we could never do a project. And then, we've been working with the county, as you know, we have an IGA with the county to share, split the costs of the Holcomb Boulevard project construction. And there is a, there is a part of, piece of property on Holcomb, just below Swan Avenue, that while we were doing our project design, it came in for a land use application for a subdivision. And the requirements of the subdivision process indicated that they needed to build sidewalks on Holcomb Boulevard plus a planter strip, which would be our typical street design cross-section. And so we weren't sure which would come first, our project or theirs, and we, at that point, we kind of thought that that subdivision would be constructed before we did our project, in which case it would have taken a chunk out of our project. Because of, as you know, subdivisions in Oregon City haven't been moving forward, and our engineering manager was talking to the individual who eventually will be developing the subdivision, but it won't be for a while because of the economy. We kind of went, oh, it's too bad that we can't construct, do our project to be consistent with the subdivision plan, because we could, we could tell them, though, you don't need to do the landscape strip, you can just keep our curb-tight sidewalk that was in our plan, or we could require them to tear out our new curb-tight sidewalk and replace it with the improvements that were required for their subdivision. But in an effort to communicate with this property owner, he said, well, I mean, I see this is, you probably can see already that this is win-win for perhaps both parties, but the, in working with the property owner, that individual agreed to give us the right-of-way if we put the sidewalk where it belongs in his subdivision now, which does mean indeed we would be constructing his frontage improvements, but we would be constructing the sidewalk anyway with our project. So we went ahead and asked our contractor, Curor Construction, what it would take to change the plan so that we would actually move the sidewalk over in the location that's prescribed by the subdivision, and add the landscape strip. And they came up with an estimate, which is a change order. Some of the work gets traded out from the existing contract, like part of the sidewalk, and this particular design changes the standard curb to a curb and gutters. There are quite a few, quite a few changes in the design. And the estimate that Curor contractors gave us is approximately $100,000, $107,000 for the work. And then we weren't sure whether or not the county would be willing to share these costs as well, because they were very interested in paying 50% of the contract amount that we bid, and we were a little concerned that they may not be interested in helping out with any change orders. But we've met with the county, and they agree that if we make this change, it would be a much better project for Holcomb Boulevard, because we would have a stretch in there that has a landscaping strip and a curb-tight sidewalk all the way down the road. And so they've agreed to pay for their share of the costs associated with the roadway. So another little piece of information is, there are a couple of costs that are associated with the water line and the sewer line in the area that we would, the county said they wouldn't be interested in paying to move parts of the water line and fire hydrants and things like that, and that would really be a city water utility expense. So the change order is going to be about $100,000, $110,000. The original contract, as I recall, was at about $470,000. This is more than 10% of that, it's our contract, it's not the county's. So even though, once we split it up, it gets down close where below, somewhere below $50,000 for the city share, but this is still, it's a city contract, change order over 10%, needs to come to the City Commission for your approval. And I would have waited to put it on your next commission agenda, except time is really of the essence here. We've got the contractors out there in the field, we're kind of, he's doing as much as he can without having a decision on this. So I respectfully request that I can bring this to you tonight, under the city manager's report, and find out if you would give approval for this change order.
And we're trying to take advantage of any of the good days to get this stuff done.
Yep, we are in the construction zone. Questions from the Commissioner West?
So along Holcomb Boulevard, it's going to be, or as designed now, it's a sidewalk with no planting strip?
That's right.
So it's going to be lots of sidewalk, and then--
And there are actually-- There are some water quality swells on the south side of Holcomb. There are some existing ditches, and we're doing some improvements to some of those. And so you'll have some greenery, but really, the Holcomb Boulevard plan was very specific in wanting to not, not have a very, very elaborate cross-section through the area. But when you have a new subdivision come in, our street standards require--
Yeah, right.
--a landscape strip. So that's where you have different, different design standards.
Commissioner Nacita?
I have a question as to whether this change order has been discussed with the Park Place Neighborhood Association.
No, we haven't discussed it with them. I can do that. We're trying to move it along. I mean, yeah, we can--
I would, I would--
I'm not sure if they have a meeting coming up either, but I can find out.
I would not be comfortable voting on this without some evidence of consultation with the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, as far as I know, they don't want anything to stop the project.
Right. I would be very surprised if they wouldn't support it, but--
Yeah, I would be, too.
Yeah.
I think we've supported the project along with the designs there, so I don't know if that would be an issue. The question I would ask is simply this: When that development comes forward, is there a mechanism that we can apply part of the cost of what we're doing here to the development? Since they're not going to do the, they're not going to have the expense of building that out, whether in fact we can require the developer to cover part of that cost? Otherwise, they would have the whole cost.
Well, we would have put in a sidewalk for them. I mean, we would have built a sidewalk. Whether or not, they might have gone back for modification in their conditions of approval to ask to not have to put in the planter strip, that's a complicated question. And we could ask them, but I don't think, I mean, the whole reason why it's not built yet is because they're in a pickle in terms--
Well, I understand that, and we wouldn't go forward until they did it.
I would say that they are, they are, the right-of-way dedication is valuable in terms of their contribution. Granted, it's just, it's about timing in terms of would that have occurred anyway? Yes, it would have occurred anyway.
But do you notice any possibility for reimbursement?
I don't think so, no. We can ask them, but that--
Ask for reimbursement if it gets built, or as they sell lots, or something, we can at least explore it.
That gets very complicated as well. I mean, all of those things, those kind of reimbursements take a lot of time.
Okay.
Development agreement.
Can you specify--
Reimbursement. Commissioner Neely?
Can you specify the amount again?
Just a moment, yeah, let's wait till-- Did you finish your conversation?
We'll look for a mechanism.
Okay, Commissioner Neely.
Could you specify the amount again of the increase?
Um--
$10,000.
It's about approximately $110,000, which the county would be paying about $40,000 of that.
Well, that's inclusive of the $110,000?
The, yes. So our amount is approximately $70,000, some of which is water and sewer.
I'm going to move to have the, a change in work order, the city's contribution, and additional $70,000.
Is that sufficient? That motion would cover what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I need a motion, I can't second it.
No, I know, I'm waiting for it.
A second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Now, discussion.
Yeah.
If the, yeah, Park Place Neighborhood Association is not meeting, I guess I would encourage, you know, a conversation with the chair, which I think is more likely. Because I do, I do think that it saves taxpayers' money to be prudent about timing and efficiency on the coordination of projects. I wouldn't want to hold this up because of that. So I guess that's what I would encourage you to do on that, on that notice issue. I mean, that's been a very involved Neighborhood Association, so I think that would be a good courtesy.
We can touch base with them.
Yeah, nope.
Commissioner West?
I agree, that's a good, great idea.
So let me make sure I understand what's happening here. We're going forward on the sidewalk. The city is redoing, the city and the county in this joint thing along Holcomb Boulevard. Somebody has an application in to do a subdivision. He is not doing it now, but you're thinking if we, you know he's going to do it, and then it would-- it would all have to get torn up and changed. So are you kind of doing this anticipation of that he's going to do this down the road to avoid getting it torn up with and added, adding a planting strip?
Well, I think it would be conceivable that he could ask, he could come in for a request for modifications of the conditions of approval and, and say, look, the city just put in the sidewalk, you don't want me to tear it up, do you? Can't, can't you live with this?
Oh, so you're breaking your own code, kind of?
No. So the, so they could come in and ask for modification to put in a different Holcomb street section.
Right.
Without the planters strip. But I can't, I cannot speculate on that. That's purely speculation. He could, he could not get that, and then he would have to tear out the sidewalk we just put in and put in the landscape strip. I think what the opportunity we see here is that he has said, hey, no problem, for obvious reasons, no problem, you guys can have the right-of-way now, and you can build on my property the sidewalk and the landscape strip. And that, everybody's a winner. It's a better project because there's a longer landscape strip on the project, and he doesn't have to do his half-street improvement in five years or whenever he builds a subdivision, and we got the right-of-way now, and we're building it once.
Or you could build it, and when it comes time for his subdivision to come in, you could give him a variance and not do it at all, and let him just call what's there is good, is good.
Right. He'd get a modification to his conditions.
And we'd save $70,000.
No, we'll obviously spend it.
Well, we would.
Well, the right-of-way is worth something.
Actually, we would, we would have still spent something, yeah, it would be a sidewalk, it would be a curb tight sidewalk all the way along his property.
Which, it'd be consistent.
Yeah, it would be. Commissioner Nacida.
It would be consistent.
I'm looking at the city calendar. The Park Place Neighborhood Association meets on November 16th, which is not that far away. And I don't think that amount of time is going to put a spike in any project. What I'd like to propose, I'd like to move to amend the motion to approve the change order per Commissioner Neely's motion contingent upon approval of the change order by the Park Place Neighborhood Association at its November 16th meeting.
Is there a second to the amendments?
I can accept this part of my motion.
Okay.
Could you accept it on this thing?
Okay, and my question then, under discussion, is, is that timeline?
I think there could be a problem with the contract. It'll throw our contract into a bit of a spin, putting a two-week delay on any further decisions, because we have, the contract lays out a schedule and a termination date, and whenever you sort of open up that can of worms, it can be, but it might be, it might go well, and it does have its problems. So I can't say for certain what, if it could have a, what, what the outcome will be with our contract.
Could we meet with their officers, and if they're, if they agree with the program, would that suffice? If not, then it could go to the Neighborhood Association.
Yeah.
If something would be better than none.
And I like the idea that, you know, if the, if the officers don't agree, then that needs to go to the 16th, but likely they, the executive couldn't even be reflective.
I think they'll be supportive, that's, I'd be.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine, because I keep, I get asked all the time, you know, when are we going to get this done from the Holcomb area residents? Commissioner Neely?
Well, I was going to say, a lot of Neighborhood Associations defer land use decisions to their steering committee. I don't know if the Park Place Neighborhood Association has a steering committee or not.
Well, the executive committee.
And.
They don't have one.
They have an executive committee, though.
Yeah, and I don't know if their lands, I don't know if, if the Neighborhood Association defers land use decisions to their executive committee or not.
Well.
Maybe they could do something via email, or.
Right. So if that is acceptable, then we'll need to either adjust the motion or, or something. What's your, to others, because we've already changed the motion to read acceptance of the Park Place Neighborhood Association.
I'll make a, how do you do it? You make an amendment on the motion, and I'll say to the.
It'd be easier to vote it, to vote it up or down and then start over, or withdraw the motion, begin over, whatever you want to do. It'd be easier to do that. You two are the motion makers, so.
Well, I would just suggest the Park Place Neighborhood Association or its executive officers.
Does that be okay with the seconders? Okay. The motion on the floor then is to approve the change order up to $70,000 contingent on the approval of Park Place Neighborhood Association or its executive officers.
Yeah, sorry, but, but the change order is actually going to be more for the $110,000, the city's share being.
Well, that's what I wondered if that was the right.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Commissioner Neely.
Well, I wanted to make sure was that the city's portion was in there.
Yeah, I understand.
$110,000, of which up to $70,000 would be borne by the city, Park City. Okay, further clarifications needed, or questions? Nancy?
So, I, I do want one clarification. This would give the authority to the executive committee to say, for example, as one hypothetical, we don't think this is, that we can do this as an executive committee, we're going to add, we're going to require this to go to a full vote of the Neighborhood Association.
Yes.
This would allow their executive committee to give us.
Because they're both in there, either Neighborhood Association or its executive officers.
I think what I would want, if you would allow, to give, give me a little reservation on this, in case it blows up our contract, to wait for two weeks, that we might have to just not use, do the change order? I mean, we, I haven't talked to the city attorney about this at all.
If we don't, if we don't get to go from the officers, it may be an issue.
Yeah, because I, I wouldn't want to jeopardize the integrity of our construction contract.
So you're going to have to work out the details with the contractor, to the extent we can wait to the 16th, and the executive committee doesn't get there, then they can do that. And if the contract, if, I guess in the city engineer's discretion, the contract can't, it's going to put too many kinks in the contract to wait to the 16th, then the change order is, is dead. Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have confidence in the executive committee.
If I was a betting person, I would bet this is a non-issue.
I bet it's a non-issue as well, from what I heard. Betty, did you want to say something? Come forward, you have to come and introduce yourself, please.
Betty, I'm Oregon City. I just want to understand, are you going to take this to the executive committee?
Yes.
Or are you going to wait until the 16th?
No, the executive committee.
Because I'll tell you, that group has really been wanting this done, and I don't live there, but they're not going to, and I'll go call Nancy right now.
Yeah, that's fine. That's our understanding as well.
That's what you want.
But if they don't make that decision, then it goes to their Neighborhood Association.
That's the issue.
Yes, okay.
Okay, as long as that's clear for everyone. All right.
Some more items.
No, 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 we have not voted.
I'm sorry.
Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Neely.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Nacida.
Aye.
Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Nancy. Good luck. Mr. Patterson, now.
Next item, I just want to make you aware of an issue that we will be bringing to you, but I want to give you a little bit of flavor for it. Ms. Bankhead and I met with Renata Mingleberg, who is with County Economic Development, and the county is inquiring about if the, about the city's interest in a strategic investment zone. This is actually an offshoot of the Oregon Strategic Investment Program, which you have the discretion to do at any time. This would actually create a zone, which would guarantee those things in that, that zone, that you can do on your, you know, whether you choose to or not, through the investment program. This is only geared towards traded sector businesses, and that includes manufacturing. It is a tax-deferal program. On top of that, there is a community service fee. Basically, we said we would be interested in discussing that. She's going to put some stuff together, we'll put that on a future work session. Probably won't get that back to you December. You can look at it, see if that's something of interest to you. It is another tool in the toolbox that may help with the development of Beaver Creek Employment Lands, should we ever move in that direction, so.
Thank you.
The next item I want to talk to you about are some police personnel additions, if it meets with your pleasure. And Chief Conrad has actually talked about several here, which I think make a lot of sense. First is, we have two CSO positions, and one of the CSO officers is in the hiring process, and if that CSO is hired as a police officer, that will leave a vacant CSO position.
Mrs. Patterson, I'm sorry.
Community service officer.
Okay. That's the one at the school.
At the schools.
Okay. Anyhow, what Chief would like to do, and I agree with, is convert that CSO position to.
Do we call it that rather than SRO now?
No, no, no. SR, School Resource Officer. These are, these are non-sworn, the community service officer is a non-sworn.
You just said it was in the schools, so that's not what you meant?
No, I didn't say that.
No, but there was a clarification.
Yes, there's a clarification. Yes. Okay, let's pull back for a moment.
Let me present this.
Yes, well, no, he asked, he asked a question that was answered incorrectly, so that's why we're all confused. So let's go, so please clarify what a CSO is.
Community service officer, it's a non-sworn.
It does what?
It does minor types of.
In my business, it's a combined sewer over.
Community service officer basically is a non-sworn position, like Mr. Patterson said, and it takes a lot of the workload off of the regular officer by handling, by handling calls that basically might have no suspect information, that would be time-consuming for the officer to take. The CSO, excuse me. The CSO can actually take it over the phone, he can do some minor accident reports that people bring into the police department. Quite honestly, they do a lot of errands for us, shuttling cars around to get serviced, to get fixed, take our radar trader out, they do basic maintenance around the police departments. They're kind of a jack-of-all-trades, in, in other words. My feeling is, we can get by with one CSO, and I think it's Mr. Patterson's going to explain, maybe convert that, that existing position to a police officer for, for a minimum amount of money.
Yeah, the cost, the cost of converting that to a police officer this year is $13,400. So because you already have that position, we wouldn't be filling that position, it would just become a police officer position. The good news is.
For the fiscal year, or for the calendar year to convert?
Oh, would, well, it'd be a permanent conversion.
Yeah, right.
Would state that, yeah. That would actually, if you look at kind of where we're at, that's seven, if we do that, that's seven additional officers since 2003. That takes us to 39 sworn personnel, which is 1.28 per thousand. So that's really quite an improvement from where we've been. In fact, actually, if we can better utilize technology and with additional additions in the future, kind of maintain that through these tougher times, that's a pretty good benchmark. In fact, I look back today, as we was cleaning out things as well, and just went through some of the needs that we went originally to that Blue Ribbon Task Force, and it's amazing, in fact, I'll bring it to you, just how far we've come with addressing a lot of different needs on a lot of different fronts, and this is one of them. So that's, that's one change we'd like to make. Chief Conrad is also talking about changing the current shifts and going to four tens, and I think the, the officers are supportive of that as well. Right now, your current shift, you have a minimum of four officers on shift. If we go to the four tens, we could create an overlap of shifts, particularly between 9:00 PM and 3:00 AM, which would actually put eight officers on the street, and that is really quite a better response time, and that also helps reduce overtime costs. So we'd like to be able to talk in, in those terms. Now, in doing that, it does, we do need an additional sergeant's position too, so we'd like to take one of the patrol positions and promote, add an additional sergeant's position for that. And just by bumping that one up, that would be an annual cost this year of $4,200, so that's a fairly minimal cost. I think it's, it's going to provide better management, working that type shift schedule if we add that additional sergeant's position. And then finally, we'd like to reclassify the property evidence officer's position. Don't know what that position would actually be called at present time, they're still working on that. That would take, besides doing those type functions, would also allow that position to add some administrative help to the detective's unit. And so, again, I think we could absorb all of this that we're talking about within the current police budget this year, so we're not talking about adding to it. It's one of the reasons, because you've had a number of vacant positions over the, over the year, so we've got some, some dollars to do that. You'll have some budgetary impact next fiscal year, but those don't seem to be too large.
Any questions about that?
Do you object, Mr. Commissioner Smith? I mean, I understand from the, I understand from, I think, an article in the press, you were responsible for all of it.
That's right. No, that's, this is, that's amazing. I, this is really, really great. So my only comment would be, if the police union is in support of it, so am I. It's great.
Do we have that word from the police union?
I don't know, that's the question, I guess.
I would want to get that word from the police union.
It looks great on paper, but I'd like, I hope that there's, I mean.
Excuse me, supportive in, in regards to which position, to which proposal?
Well, all of the above.
Well, I, I could speak, and I'm sure one of the officers of the association would like to come back and talk to you too, Commissioner Smith, but I can assure you wholeheartedly that the officers are 100% behind going to the four-ten shift.
Yeah.
It benefits them as well as the police department, and I think it's a win-win for all of us. Obviously, another promotional opportunity, I think speaks to a lot of the officers who have aspirations to move up within the organization. And, and the CSO position, I think when, when you ask the officers whether they choose for having somebody answering the phones in the office, or backing up on a call in the street, they're definitely going to ask for another officer in a patrol car. And I, and I have discussed this with association people, including the president of the association, Mike Kramer, and some of the rank and file officers, and I have not heard one person say they do not approve of this, they didn't like the idea. But I'd be more than glad to have one of the association officers come back and take that in person, if you like.
The only objection I would have on that, I think the discussion of the four tens, talking with the union, I think that's very appropriate. I think the creating of a position or a sergeant's position, again, I do not think that is a union discussion.
And the, the current contract, the current collective bargaining agreement does say that the, their shifts can be changed to the four-ten. That isn't with the collective bargaining unit announced, it is within the, the allowances of the CB, the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay.
Okay, and the final item I will mention again, is I want to go to the move and talk a little bit about that. That is set for Friday. I don't know if any of you have a chance to kind of walk through the building, and particularly Ms. Ayde's office, you'll see that it has become box haven back there. But there are some logistics you need to be aware of. As of Friday at 3:00, we will not be receiving incoming phone calls, that will go to voicemail at that point. Again, all those are being set up, and hopefully all that goes well. And then on Monday morning, anyone making calls, those will be coming in the city hall. Again, city hall will be closed on Monday, as staff will go to the new city hall and begin to unpack, so that we will be open for business on Tuesday. If you were down at the Saturday, there is a lot of work that's underway, and a lot of people down there. Needless to say, we really were scrambling to get the paving in, really changed subs as of Tuesday afternoon, and you saw our crew down there. In fact, they were still working as we came to this meeting, and I believe that will be done. Hopefully, if we get a little window tomorrow, we'll get that strapped as well. A lot of finishing details going on inside the building, landscaping going in, phones and computers are going in, the moving companies coming in here on Friday, and of course, they'll be moving over the weekend amongst all that, so it's quite an activity. I think you'll be really pleased when you see that new facility is quite an improvement on what we, we set in here. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Now, communications, Commissioner.
I'd like to make a request for a future work session topic.
Sure. Commissioner Neely?
Simply because it's all over the news in terms of the, the potential PERS problem, I would like that work session devoted to that.
On, on the PERS subject?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can, so we can think about our, just think about our budget coming up.
Actually, that might be a good one to have, actually, at a commission meeting.
That's fine.
To report.
That's fine.
Because it's really just a report. I know the work session agenda is getting loaded. Commissioner West, report?
Thanks, Commissioner Neely. That's, I was, it's been on my send email button since that article last Sunday, thinking the same thing. the same thing. It was a disturbing article, if it's, if what it says is true. So, on to announcements and I would like to share a little bit of the meetings I've attended this week, or the last couple of weeks. So one night, I went to a meeting put on from the Clackamas County Arts Alliance for all performing artists and so you're probably wondering why I went to that, maybe I have talents I have not shared.
I thought you seemed kind of dramatic.
So anyway, I'll tell you why I went, but, and so it was all for performing artists and how they can get more time to perform in Clackamas County. So I did go, the reason I went is because working on Main Street, we have restaurants that have empty seats and the Clackamas Community Repertory Theater has seats that aren't sold, so we were looking for some opportunities for some cross-marketing there. We also had a interesting New Century Players might be, they were open to a new home and the Portland Boys Choir is looking for a Clackamas County location to practice on a regular basis and perform. So at this point on Main Street in Oregon City, we do visual arts in the empty storefront windows and so it even got to the point where maybe we'll be looking for some of the, some of these groups to do one, two, or three, or small group performing, live performing theater in our storefronts downtown. So instead of First Friday, which we are having this week with visual arts, you'll be able to see some performing arts. So, kind of fun. So we're looking forward to some cross-marketing opportunities there, especially with the college theater, to get going for next winter. Another meeting I attended-
It's actually a community theater, not the college theater.
Clackamas County Repertory-
No, Clackamas Repertory Theater.
Clackamas Repertory, sorry.
They perform at the college, but they are a separate company.
Right, oh, yes. Yes, thank you for the clarification. Another meeting I went to was the Clackamas Cities Dinner and, well, I had an opportunity to meet lots of city managers. Just kidding. Okay, so the presentation was on-
I noticed you were wearing a new necklace.
Yeah, I've never met so many city managers in my life that night.
They're starting to be real nice, aren't they?
Yes! Buying you a drink, no, just kidding, not true.
No, no, no.
Not true.
All jokes, all jokes.
Yeah. So the presentation was put on by the City of Tuolatin and Wilsonville to talk about the similarities and differences as big job-producing areas. So it was quite interesting how many jobs both communities together have, forty thousand jobs. So then the next statistic is, is gee whiz, forty percent of all those people that work at those jobs don't live in either Tuolatin or Wilsonville and so it gets back to that inequity or-
Job housing balance.
Yep, job housing balance. So that was an interesting evening, learning about their situation and also the sensitivity to how they've planned all their freeway connections. It's nothing about Bridgeport, nothing about retail or housing, that, it's all gauged to keep that transportation freight moving. It was interesting. Another meeting, a whole group of meetings I've been on this week have been on how our communities can deal with people that are less fortunate than ourselves and with this economic climate, there certainly is more of them. And so I went to a Metro meeting where Myron Orfield was the speaker and Metro always puts a lot of thought-provoking, broad-picture issues out there. And so basically, what the subject of that meeting was, is if we don't plan, start planning as a region, including Oregon City, Westland, all of us, we don't start planning for how to deal with economic and racial diversity, we are going to become polarized communities. And fortunately, Oregon City wasn't up on polarized in racial or economic ways, but Oregon City did not come up on the radar as in any extreme, but our neighbor across the river came up as extreme on both ends with all one ethnic, ethnicity and only high-income economic diversity. So that was interesting, but that kicked off a local thing on what we are doing in Oregon City on helping those that are less fortunate and that is the, we had the kickoff meeting for the redevelopment of Clackamas Heights and I did not realize that Clackamas Heights is the oldest public housing property in the state of Oregon, built in nineteen forty-one. They have a hundred units, two-hundred-twenty people, so two-point-two people per unit is their average. That whole area, how many acres is it, is zoned for an R. point-three-five and they are looking to, when they redevelop that property, increase the density-
Twenty acres.
Twenty acres, thank you. They're, to increase the density quite a bit on it and not necessarily with public housing, but it'll be a mixed-use development is kind of what they're hoping or shooting for. So that was, that was good.
Could I comment more about that because I think that's really an interesting proposal? I got a chance to tour it on, last week. What they're planning on doing, Clackamas County Housing Authority, is moving, finding other homes for the residents in the community. It will still remain with subsidized housing. When the community is built, those residents will have an opportunity to go back to that community if they wish to. And it's very interesting, the study area that they're looking at is not just the boundaries of the housing unit, but they're looking at the area that includes Steve's Market for redevelopment so that it can be truly a community with essential services close by and all of the surrounding areas will be included in the planning for this. So it's really something worth watching. And then, you know, there's two subsidized housing areas there, so the lower one is the one we're talking about, Clackamas Heights, which is the bigger one.
Correct.
The upper area will likely, not sure it's in our lifetime, I think, I think they're looking like ten years down the road, will likely be sold and redeveloped at market rate. So it'll be very interesting to watch and also plan for the connectivity that that higher density and changing uses will provide, for instance, to our transit center and other pathways and pedestrian ways in the community.
I plan to have a lifetime that extends at least a ten years.
At least ten years?
Yes.
Well, it depends on whether you stay in the commission or not, you know.
You mean-
Shorten it considerably.
Are you suggesting if I did, I'd get assassinated before the tenure period?
No threats, not my department. Well, yeah, what you were saying about the redevelopment opportunities of creating services and I know Commissioner Neely's talked about this before with levees and things and Park Place being a little bit, oh, well, it doesn't have a central neighborhood, or not neighborhood, service district, for instance, like in the rest of Oregon City. So this, I'm hoping, is an opportunity to create coffee shops, dry cleaners, more food choices, restaurants, that kind of thing. So I think it'll be a catalyst project for that neighborhood. And the last meeting I, or group I attended was today, was I had a tour of Northwest, or introduction and a tour from Northwest Housing Alternatives in the Annie Ross House and it was, it was for all kinds of people, just to let us know what their programs and what they offered and as far as Oregon City, a takeaway for it is, I says, so how can I help you or how can Oregon City help you, but they were working with a broad-based faith group from the Lutheran, excuse me, the Lutheran Church here to see if they could, or to supplement food and those kinds of services or whether, they're looking everything from food to sleeping bags to furniture for their Annie Ross House. One of the students, or one of the statistics they threw out there that I thought I'd share because of Oregon City, of course, was the rise in student homelessness and this was really, compared to the county here, we're eighty percent. So in oh-six, oh-seven, they had a hundred and eleven homeless students and they're up to two hundred this year. So the homeless person could be, you know, anybody next door to you these days and we were all saying that we wish our communities would accept more opportunities for low income and in making places for people that are less fortunate than ourselves and it's a sticky wicket sometimes.
I think it's really interesting and the homeless statistic for students, they break it down into where homeless people live. So one is shared housing and that's where the majority of homeless live is, so they move in with families or other people so that that household often becomes cost-burdened as well. And then motels and then out on the streets. The number of high school seniors that live on their own is also a little bit startling that this economic times has really created that.
And I also wanted, it's an announcement, this Friday is our second First Friday downtown on Main Street from four-thirty to seven, so anybody come on down, there's art in many business windows and food and refreshments and it'll start all the way from, our main street's extended from Howden's Art Gallery over on Washington all the way to downtown Oregon City, so it extends farther than our traditional downtown. So I hope you can join us. And last was another Main Street activity and, ah, gee whiz, Halloween, I, took me a half an hour to get home from the Oregon City-Westland Bridge to up on the hill and I can't believe we don't have any accidents without police down there doing signals. And I would propose that we would have some, what do you call it, you know?
Reserves.
Reserves down there directing traffic. There, I don't know how many, who has an accurate count on how many children are down-
They're usually about five hundred, I think. Well, I know-
Oh, no, there was more than five hundred.
Oh, I don't know. I gave, I don't know, there's lots.
Huh?
I think when you-
There was lots.
We count the adults too.
But could be a dangerous situation with that flashing four-way, flashing light in the four-way stop there on Main and Tenth. So thank you.
Good report, you've been busy. I think it's, it's kind of a lead into the comments I have to make too because we spend a lot of time at the meetings in which I represent you, talking about cost-burdened households and it's a very important thing. So we've been discussing and then that creates discussion at every level, whether we're discussing the regional transportation plan or whether we're discussing the urban growth report or whatever. So both Commissioner Neely and I have been to an all-day IMPACT, Metro Policy Advisory Committee, work session where we discussed the urban growth report and the regional transportation plan, both of which will be coming up for adoption this month. So they're very, very key and the discussion has been very intense about them, how we want the region to grow and how we want to connect our pieces, how do we match land use with transportation. So I think the, really the only, the biggest pushback on the urban growth report is from Washington County, particularly the City of Hillsborough, who believe that they need five to seven additional lots of at least twenty acres, of at least fifty acres over the next twenty years. Assembling large lots is really a huge discussion piece around the region as the City of Beaverton has just learned assembling large lots for a baseball stadium isn't easy, nor is assembling large lots for any purpose and so there's a special task force that's looking at that. So the amount of available land may be increased because of Hillsborough's push, so rather than what is in the urban growth report, Hillsborough's pushing for two thousand to fifteen hundred acres of employment land. So that's a, that's a big policy shift and how do we get the jobs there and it was a very robust discussion on that. The other discussion that's huge that we'll be making a decision on at J-PAC, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, and Nancy Crashauer is the representative for the cities of Clackamas County and we have two points of, at least two points of discussion and that involves us and Clackamas County. And one is that, I mentioned to you that through Metro, we're putting together performance measures for the region, how we decrease the carbon footprint, how we increase the number, actually triple the number of, of the amount of walking, transit rides, bicycle rides that we do in the region, they, how we reduce the vehicle hours of delay per traveler. I don't know if you can see this, but it's pretty graphic. They gave us, and the regional transportation plan has the wish list essentially, it's been a little bit culled through the county processes, but it's the wish list of the transportation connections that we in Oregon City and all the other jurisdictions believe that we need to have to make our city livable and connected. And then they measured against the performance measures that I've just talked about that are carbon and increasing the active lifestyle, et cetera. And this is the target and this is where the projections are. The target's down here, that's one. Here's another one, the target's here, the projections are here. There are, there's nothing in any of the transportation, let's see, yeah, ozone emissions, I think, was the only thing that hit the targets, but everything else with our transportation aspirations, we don't even come close to the targets. So the discussion, which was very lively at the last IMPACT meeting, was why would we have performance measures if we can't hit them? Or conversely, why aren't we running all the transportation projects through the performance filter and the ones that are helping us achieve those performance targets, your rise to the top of the agenda? Well, that's, that's where the push points are. The staff says that, you know, there's so many transportation projects, I don't know, twelve-hundred or something on the list, is that right Nancy? There's a lot of them on the list and it would be a massive effort to put them against the criteria. So there are probably the heads that say the performance measures are a start, are a good thing. What I'm also promoting is that we have the Metro Performance Measures, but all action is local and if we can't prove here at Oregon City in our jurisdiction that we're making progress on those performance targets and each other jurisdiction does the same, you know, we may not really get there. So I'm really promoting the fact that we all need to be responsible at the local level too and so you may be hearing more about that. I don't know where that'll go. Secondly, congratulations, I think actually you did announce that Oregon City is in compliance with our nature of neighborhoods Title XIII mapping and we're, I'm not sure what the majority of cities are. So that was really nice to be announced in the compliance list and so congratulations to staff for that. I have, you may or may not know that the North Baldock Rest Area, which is the one that's over by Wilsonville on I-5, well, all the rest areas in the state are being reconfigured and they're expected to be cutting-edge in the United States. They are to be, instead of a place where you stop and go to the bathroom and get a cup of coffee from a charity, a place where you go to learn things, to, that they're actually economic development generators, that's the plan, so that they're places where local communities, state, that do trade sector or other business can display their goods there, have all of the information there. And anyway, they're being redeveloped in this new kind of mode and so I've been asked to serve on this committee which includes all of the I-205 cities and this is a direct, I mean, this rest area is a direct arrow to Oregon City. So if, when we redevelop our plan for the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center and if that's a visitor's center, it would match up very nicely. So I hope, that's, my purpose on the committee is really to provide the linkage to what we're doing and what they plan to do. So I believe that work starts in early December, it's supposed to be only a few meetings, but I've heard that before. I think that's the report that I have, C4 is on Thursday and it's undergoing a little reorganization as well. Other reports from committees? Commissioner Nacida?
I have two, Madam Mayor. One, I'd like to begin by giving kudos to one of our planners, Christina Roberts-Gardner. I've been attending a series of seminars entitled Sustainable Development Integrity, Urban Planning Integrating, I'm sorry, Integrating Urban Planning and Green Building. This has been a series of morning lectures that have been given down at the Portland Development Commission in downtown Portland and it's been very inspiring to me to see a lot of top-notch people in the green building and green planning field talk about various visions around the Portland metropolitan area, focusing on Portland. And one of the key panelists that I've been pleased to listen to is Christina, talking about what a small city with a planning staff of a community development director and four planners can do at a scale that's not the Portland-type of scale. There's been a lot of discussion about the Morton Road Project-
Oh, Juneberry.
Juneberry Lane and Griffin, one of the, one of the promoters of that with the Earth Advantage Institute has been another one of the panelists there. of the panelists there. So, that was, that's been a, that's been a pleasure attending that series of seminars. The other thing I wanted to talk about is my vacation last week back east. And I had-
I have slides of mine. Should we show them together?
Yeah, we can do that.
How I spent my vacation.
I got to on Saturday, visit William Colonial Williamsburg in Virginia, where I had been as a teenager, and this was, I think, my second visit there, with a different kind of view of things. This time I was, I had actually brought with me on the trip a copy I had obtained from Peggy Sigler of the 1990 End of the Oregon Trail Master Plan. And when Rocky had first introduced me that document, I was quite impressed with it, but not, not as much as I am impressed with it now, having actually turned every page and really wrestled with what was being expressed by that plan.
Yeah, it's a good plan.
And I've become quite a fan of it. And having seen, you know, the, people have heard that the plan termed that it was going to create something of a Williamsburg of the West. And having read the descriptions of the various components of that master plan, and outdoor living history and, you know, interpretation, getting a sense of what is done in Williamsburg and how it's managed, really gave, really buttressed my view that something like that should be created at that site, irrespective of what, you know, may have not gone right in the past. The idea that's described in that document, I think is valid. I think it's a valid idea for that site, even if we have to take a very long-term view of being able to create something there. There's a lot of things we don't have in Oregon City that they do have in Colonial Williamsburg, Rockefeller's being one of them. But that's not to say that, you know, we couldn't find some type of financing to create something like that at the End of the Trail site. And I think, you know, we've been going back to the discussion of Nanita McLeHatten's Consultants' Report. And one of her key conclusions that I did take away from that Consultants' Report was that she did almost specifically say, "To make that economy work, one would have to go up to that level of 350, 450,000 annual visitors that the 1990 End of the Trail Master Plan called for and anticipated." So, that's, I think, an interesting argument of, kind of like a validation in this era of what that plan in 1990 was calling for. So, I'm, as I say, I'm pretty captive baby to buy it now, and I'm going to pursue, you know, I have not yet seen the 1996 update of the 1990 plan. And, you know, there's a lot of studies that I want to continue looking into, but it's, I find good ideas are good ideas when they take over people's minds. And, you know, good ideas can have a power of their own and outlast adversity or false starts or, and I think I'm actually experiencing in the community, kind of like a revival of interest in that plan. And I'd like to see it reprinted. I'd like to see more people wrestle with it, like I have been wrestling with it, and talk about it more as we, you know, continue these conversations that we've been having about that site. So, that's my report.
Okay. Any further's? Commissioner Smith?
Well, kind of adding on to what Commissioner Wes was talking about, I was just thinking while you were talking about performing arts, that, I mean, when you write down all the theater groups that we have in Oregon City, it's unbelievable. You have the Clackamas Community College Performing Arts Department, the Clackamas Repertory Theater, the Oregon City Children's Theater, the Crayon Kids, and Oregon City High School Drama Department. And, I mean, that's incredible. The only thing that was running through my mind is, boy, wouldn't it be great if we had a theater on Main Street?
Yeah, that's what was running through my mind.
Hmm, jeez, it seems like just yesterday we had one, and it vanished mysteriously. I just wish we would have seen then what was going to happen to Main Street today when people said, "Oh, no one's going to move into downtown Oregon City and spend a million dollars to renovate a building, so let's just knock it down." And I will regret the county's decision on that ever since, losing the Liberty Theater. Because here we are today, and downtown's looking good, and people have interest in it, and where's our theater? Maybe we can, you know, there's still one original theater building left in this town, so maybe there's hope in the future. But lots of drama department performances coming up with all of those groups. So, I thought, you know, mentioned that, Oregon City High School plays White Christmas, which will be first part of December. And the school, in the school realm, you know, they're kind of working on community needs and stuff, and canned food drive and lots of stuff. We're getting into the season where we're all going to be asked to contribute lots of money and donations to various community groups and time. And I think we all try our best to do as much as we can. And so, I appreciate all the people in Oregon City and the school districts who reach out when people are in need. And we've had that experience within last week at the high school, too, with people coming out of the woodwork to support the school. So, I just appreciate that we live in a community that does that more than any community that I know. So, I think that's amazing. And just lastly, on the conversation, the community gathering meeting that's been going on to discuss tourism in Oregon City, and lately, more specifically, the End of the Oregon Trail Site met yesterday. And I think that committee's going to continue to still meet, just as a jumping board for discussions that can continue. And they, that group as a whole seemed really supportive of the idea of the formation of this task force that we've talked about. And that group as a whole is, I think, going to create some sort of a ladder to kind of talk about that group's vision for what that task force could be and things like that. And so, I think be on the lookout for that. At least there was, I think there's four people in the audience that were at that meeting last night, at least four. So, that was good. It's been, it's been a nice discussion to kind of go in conjunction with what we've been talking about as well, so. And I don't know if you actually said that you went to Williamsburg, but that's, he, so just for your-
I think that was his report.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, he talked about, well, okay, I don't know if it, but I've, and-
Pretty sure I said it.
Which is amazing, because Marge Harding went to Williamsburg. Apparently, everyone's going, and I have never been, so.
And you should include Sturbridge Village in your travels as well. Okay, if there's no further business to come before us.
I'd like to make a comment to-
Commissioner Neely?
To the Main Street people here, a lot of, I think a lot of people don't know it, but there were tunnels that connected various of the businesses there in Oregon City. And the passageways, though, break in, still exist in some of those buildings. And I don't know if your Main Street people really know that. And I assume at one point or another, there might be some opportunities there, and worth looking at.
I'd like to see that, too.
Doug, while you mention that, I can't help but mention, I brought this up just a second ago. When I missed the last Urban Renewal Commission meeting, but the discussion of North End Main Street came up and infill in the future. And one of the topics came up was the parking lot between Main Street and McLaughlin Boulevard on 10th. And I wish I was at that meeting, because there was a cemetery there. And so, in the future, if we think about, you know, talking about infilling buildings, we want to make sure we check to make sure everything's been moved.
All right. And on that note-
Nothing or everybody.
We'll see you all at our new City Hall next, at our next meeting. We are adjourned.